And then this one, if you'll just tip the board when they see that.
When they see it, okay. Do you need to say anything beforehand?
Okay.
All right, if I can have everybody's attention and good evening. It is 6:00 PM on May 20th, 2021. And this is due we file and post in regular meeting with the Alma Heights Board of Trustees. Thanks to all of you for coming. I'd like to welcome anyone listening on our live streaming broadcast. If anyone would like a recording of this meeting, we'll also be posting a link on the district's website within 24 hours. Actually, in this meeting. In addition, we also post the material being presented within 24 hours. So you can review a copy of those as well. This all can be found on the school board icon at our ahisds.net website. If anyone in the audience would like to address the board tonight, we welcome your input during our citizens to be heard agenda. You should have filled out a yellow form by the door, read the lengthy instructions, and indicate the agenda item if you get the present one. So we can introduce you at the appropriate time. All right, so with it being May, we've got new trustees to move on to. But first, I'd just like to make a comment to our board as we transition to the new board. A lot has happened in the year that I've got to be in this role. And I thank y'all for serving with me during this role. And it struck me, I was reminded that my parents celebrated 50 years of marriage during the lockdowns, which to me is pretty incredible. And I asked them, people won't do that anymore. How do you stay together through so many ups and downs for 50 years without missing anything? My mom said respect. Emotions come and go, affection comes and go, feelings come and go, but you choose respect. And for this past year, this board chose respect through all the emotional times we had to get through, especially through the disagreements we had to work through. We chose respect every time. And so I'm very grateful to all of you and to Lisa who can't be here tonight for serving on this board with such distinction for the past year. And I know our new trustees, I know their character, and I'm excited that that tradition is going to continue. So thank you all for your service. So now we will go on to item number 2A, Ose of Office for Newly Elected Trustees. Ms. Emma Sanchez will now administer the oath of office to the newly elected trustees, Mrs. Carrie Hildebrand and Mr. Robert Clay Page.
If you all could stand and raise your right hand and then repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Carrie Hildebrand.
I, Clay Page.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Trustee
Of the Office of Trustee.
For the Alma Heights Independent School District
For the Alma Heights Independent School District.
Of the State of Texas
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me God.
All right. Thank you, Carrie. Thank y'all for being here. So we will now move on to item 2C, Consider-- oh, no, we won't. We're going to move on to item 2B, the Resolution for Outgoing Board Members. So it's an embarrassing tradition to celebrate our outgoing board members with a resolution. And we will continue that tradition tonight. So, Ms. Bonnie Giddens, nine years.
Hmm.
Thank you for your service. Your kids coming from this place.
I'm ready.
Okay, whereas Bonnie Giddens has served on the Board of Trustees of the Alma Heights Independent School District from May 12th, 2012 to May 20th, 2021. Great distinction. And?
Whereas during her tenure, Mrs. Giddens at various times served as president, vice president, secretary, assistant secretary, chair of various committees, including audit, building, goals and priorities, legislative, long-range planning, nominations and policy, as well as school board representative to the Alma Heights School Foundation, strategic planning, district design team, health and safety, and superintendent selection committees. And?
Whereas the contributions of Ms. Giddens through her hard work, encouragement, attention to detail, succinct feedback, and positive attitude will be felt by the Alma Heights Independent School District for many, many years to come. And?
Whereas the special characteristics brought by Mrs. Giddens to the board have included compassion, integrity, warmth, mentorship, professionalism, and an infectious dedication to students. And?
Whereas Mrs. Giddens's powerful commitment, reassuring presence, and enthusiasm for serving the needs of our schoolchildren as a school board member will be greatly missed by her fellow trustees and by the school district she loves. And?
Now therefore, be it resolved, the Alma Heights Independent School District Board of Trustees thanks and commends Bonnie Giddens for her invaluable service, loyalty, and leadership while serving on the school board. Get motion. Her dedication to public service is truly extraordinary. We wish her well in the future, her in future endeavors as a devoted patron of the Alma Heights ISD community and friend and advocate of Texas Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Now we get to embarrass one more. Mr. Perry Schenkel. Whereas Perry Schenkel has served on the Board of Trustees of the Alma Heights Independent School District from May 9th, 2015 to May 20th, 2021 with great distinction. And?
Whereas during his tenure, Mr. Schenkel at various times served as vice president, secretary, assistant secretary, chair of various committees, including building, budget, communications, investment, long-range planning, policy and nominations, as well as school board representative to the Alma Heights School Foundation and superintendent selection committees. And?
Whereas the contributions of Mr. Schenkel through his hard work, leadership, encouragement, and positive attitude have been exceptional and will be felt by the Alma Heights Independent School District for many, many years to come. And?
Whereas the special characteristics brought by Mr. Schenkel to the board have included compassion, integrity, warmth, mentorship, and professionalism.
Whereas Mr. Schenkel's dedication, reassuring presence, good humor, and powerful devotion to serving the needs of our schoolchildren as a school board member will be greatly missed by his fellow trustees and by the school district he loves. And?
Now therefore, be it resolved, the Alma Heights Independent School District Board of Trustees thanks and commends Perry Schenkel for his invaluable service, devotion, and leadership while serving on the school board. His dedication to the public, to public service is truly extraordinary. We wish him well in his future endeavors as a devoted patron of the Alma Heights ISD community and friend and advocate of Texas Public Schools.
Thanks, buddy. Okay, now we'll move on to item 2C, Assignment-- I mean, 2C is Consideration of New Board Officers. So I would like to propose a new slate of officers. President Ryan Anderson, Vice President Brian Hamilton, Secretary Stacy Sharp, Assistant Secretary Lisa Kringer. Do I have a motion from the trustees to appoint the new officers as presiding? So moved. Thank you, Brian. Do I have a second? Thank you, Clay. There we go. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, mostly carries. All right, so Ryan, you and I shall now change seats, and you shall take over as presiding officer of the meeting.
Committee assignments are also rotated to keep a fresh opinion and ideas on different committees. The committee assignments for this coming school year are Alma Heights School Foundation, David Hornberger, Assessment and Long Range--
Yeah.
I'm not on. Nice, turned the microphone. All right, we'll try this again. The committee assignments for the 2021-2022 school year are Alma Heights School Foundation, David Hornberger, Assessment and Long Range Planning, Lisa Kringer, Budget Committee, Ryan Anderson and Carrie Hildebrand, Audit Committee, David Hornberger, Clay Page, and Brian Hamilton, Investment Committee, David Hornberger and Carrie Hildebrand, Building Committee, Brian Hamilton, Stacy Sharp, Clay Page, Communications Committee, Ryan Anderson, Goals and Priorities Committee, Ryan Anderson, Legislative Committee, Stacy Sharp and Carrie Hildebrand, Nominations Committee, Ryan Anderson and Brian Hamilton, Policy Review Committee, Ryan Anderson and Lisa Kringer, and District Education Advisory Council, Stacy Sharp. In addition, Brian Hamilton will serve on the district design team, and Ryan Anderson and Brian Hamilton will be the Health and Safety Committee. Section 3, we will move to--
Bonnie, you're going to start.
Okay, before we move into the delegation, y'all can tell I'm new at this. The board adopted a statement that we would like to make before we move forward with our meeting. During this past week, we learned that several of our neighbors' yards were vandalized, causing tens of thousands of dollars of damage. Among the affected families are parents who have devoted countless hours supporting our school district, including serving as officers of parent-student teacher organizations, students who teach, who attend our schools, a beloved retired Alma Heights high school teacher, and one of the candidates. While the investigations by the Alma Heights and San Antonio Police Departments are ongoing, the common thread connecting the vandalized properties were campaign signs from the recent election for this very board. We, the trustees of the Alma Heights Independent School District, take this opportunity to remind our community to remember who we are. We respect the rights of our neighbors to voice their support for the candidates of their choice. Our community is made richer by the diversity of its members, and we all must stand together to send a clear message to those who would attack that diversity of perspectives. We invite our community to join us in uniting against threatening and hateful conduct toward those with whom anyone disagrees. We ask that anyone who has information that could lead to the identification of those responsible for the desecration of our neighbors' lawns to contact the Alma Heights and San Antonio Police Department. Thank you. At this time, before we start the delegations, we'd like to excuse Bonnie and Perry. You have served your time well. Thank you. And we are now going to move on to recognition. But before I turn it over to Dr. Frank Alvaro, I would like to take a moment to focus our attention on one of the many aspects of our school district. For those of you who do not know, Emma Sanchez will be retired at the end of the school year. From the moment I stepped into the shoes of a trustee, Emma has been a constant reassuring presence. She makes sure that we are organized, she gets necessary information into our hands, and she makes sure we have everything we need to do our jobs and that we complete our training hours. Finally, she makes sure that we are all well-fed, from the candy that you will all see in front of you at the meetings to the breakfast tacos that you bring to us in the morning. Thank you. She does it all with a smile on her face and kindness in her heart. As you complete your 44-year career in education, I want to say on behalf of every trustee who has ever been a part of this board, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you've done for us for all these years. And good luck and enjoy your next phase. You may not be with us in each meeting in presence anymore, but you will always be with us. Thank you, Emma.
Thank you.
And with that, Dr. Alvaro, I am sure you are chomping at the bit. So I turn the program over to you for recognition. Well done. All right, guys, so a couple of words to our audience. We have lots of individuals to celebrate today. So I want to ask the audience to all please stay until the end of the final recognition. And you'll know that because I'll say that ends our recognitions. If you would like to leave, no, you can't. And so please hang around because everyone here that's being recognized really deserves all of our attention. The second thing is to the numerous folks that we will be recognizing. We have an order that we're trying out today that is we will recognize you from here. When your group is done, I'm going to ask you to do a horseshoe around here and to just kind of congregate over there by where Coach Rindman is. And not to leave until everybody else is done. Large-scale groups that are leaving kind of get in the way of the rest of them. So if you guys can, let's see what we can do. So it's almost going to be like a mirror image. This side's going to flip to that side by the time we're all done. All right, having said that, let's get rolling with our first recognition. Let's explain what it is first. Every month, we shine the Spotlight on Excellence on an Alma Heights employee who often goes unrecognized, working behind the scenes to fuel our tradition of excellence. Tonight's Spotlight on Excellence Award goes to Erin Heinz from Howard Early Childhood Center. Now Erin is a kindergarten teacher at Howard, and she stands up by her innovative thinking as well as leading all of her staff and colleagues in professional learning, both new to teaching as well as veteran colleagues. Now, last spring, when we closed during the pandemic, Erin was one of the first to jump in to help us move towards the virtual platform, and she was really instrumental in helping all of her fellow colleagues around. Now, she's got energy like no other. Our students in her class come to school excited every day. She knows the true meaning of engagement. Picture this, a kindergarten class, all the little kids going around, and she goes the extra mile to transform her entire classroom content they're talking about. Whether it's a huge ship in her classroom, dressed as a pirate to learn about maps, or whether it's hospital gear with surgical gear to learn, and operating tables to learn about deconstructing numbers to 10. Isn't that creative? Students are often heard to say, man, this was the best day in my life when they walk by Erin's room. So that's why we shine a spotlight on excellence on Erin.
I hope that I can think of this district for this wonderful honor and to be recognized. And I have such a loving, supportive family and wonderful coworkers. So thank you everyone for this.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Kay is at the end of this next group. And the next are three recognitions. I'm going to list it out, and we can all clap, and then we're going to find out. We'll let these young people introduce themselves. And so the three we're recognizing are the Hoop Print, which won the UIL Award of Achievement, we're recognizing the Yearbook, which won the UIL Award of Distinguished Merit, and we're recognizing the Yearbook, again, almost a yearbook, for winning Law Force Yearbook Yearbook Award, which honors the best yearbooks in the country and overseas. So let's clap before we get to learn who's here. So students, if you told us your name, grade, grade, and whether or not you book or Hoop Print.
We're both.
I'm Jacob Williams, I'm 11th grade, and I'm a Hoop Print.
My name is John Hooper, senior co-editor for Hoop Print.
I'm Mark Seckler, I'm in 12th grade, I'm a co-editor for the Hoop Print.
Stefan Amoslin, 12th grade, and I'm a co-editor in chief of the Hoop Print.
Jock Enslin, 12th grade, and editor for the Hoop Print.
I'm Nadle Wean, I'm a senior, I'm the editor in chief of the Hoop Print.
Hi, I'm Eva DeBach, I'm a senior, I'm editor and Hoop Print, and I'm also staff member for the Yearbook.
My name is James Crowe, I'm a senior, and I'm a co-editor for the Alma Heights Yearbook.
Hi, I'm Lizzie Minor, and I'm a co-editor for the Yearbook.
Hi, I'm Catherine Rogers, I'm a junior, and I'm a staff member of the Yearbook.
I'm Randy Lucas, I'm also a junior and I'm a staff of the Yearbook.
I'm Erin Howard, I'm in 12th grade, and I'm a student life editor.
I'm Krista Allman, and I'm a junior, that's all the Yearbook staff.
All right, Kristen's Kate, the sponsor, comes up about this great teams.
This was the most challenging year of Yearbook, but also the most fun. We call it our wrong book, and we finished 217 pages of the 400-page book after the school was closed. And I can assure you that's the most math I've done in like 30 years. I'm so proud of these kids and the work that they do every day. I'm so proud of my Hoop Print kids. They are an amazing group. I love them with every breath in my body, and I'm going to miss them tremendously when they graduate away. And for my juniors, they get more of this Kate next year, and that's a lot to take around that one time.
One more round of applause for this group. Great, they're tall. Who's behind me? No, I thought we did the whole group. Sorry, Kristen. You guys take a seat for a second. Because you're using the notes. I'm looking to continue the group. Where's the last one in your group? Way back. Great, sorry about that.
I'm Amy Chaney, I'm a senior, and I'm a co-editor for the Yearbook.
I'm Erin DePerry, I'm a senior, and I'm a co-editor for the Yearbook.
Hi, I'm Meredith Kerpen Walker, I'm a senior, and I'm a co-editor of the Yearbook.
Oh, I'm Danielle, also, I'm a junior, and I'm a staff member of the Yearbook.
Yay.
All right, another round of applause for those two women. I think I'm coming up on some science olympia, is that right, y'all? All right. So I'm going to go, we have junior school and high school on that side, so we'll just go through. So the first thing we want to point out is that we have Science Olympiad state awards, and then we've got some more science things at the high school that I'm going to run through. So our junior school students, as you know, I talked to them earlier, they have, every year, they have, they excel at Science Olympiad and UIL, the various sources. But this was a, just a very different year for them. And so they're usually, they're used to going out and doing lots of competitions at various places, and they did it all virtually this year, but it didn't stop their excellence. So our junior school Science Olympiad folks was one of 30 teams invited to state competition, and the overall ranking, they closed 15th in the state. Let's give them a round of applause. Now I'm going to go through the junior school Science Olympiad. You guys, this way? Who are you guys? Yes, well, let's do a high school. Tell us your name and your grade, not just kind of keep on trying.
I'm Mary Keith, I'm a senior.
I'm Valerie Chase, I'm a senior.
I'm Sebastian Brugger, I'm a junior.
I'm Laura Bueller, I'm a senior.
I'm Anna Maria, and I'm an eighth.
I'm Joanna Reed, I'm in 11th grade.
I'm Christopher Caffrey, I'm in 8th grade.
I'm William Stevenson, and I'm in 8th grade.
I'm Warren Crainer, 8th grade as well.
I'm Logan Walton, and I'm in 8th grade.
All right, so, and of course, we have John Shepherd up here from the junior school teaching. We appreciate you and all your support. Mike Snell's in the back. Mike Snell snuck in somewhere. Mike Waybadus is way over there. We appreciate your support. My good clap for the sponsors as well. Now, I spoke to John Shepherd earlier, and he was gracious enough to yield his time to the next group to explain the interesting science that's been going on at the high school. And so next, we'd like to recognize the Texas Science and Engineering-- oh, I'm sorry, I flubbed. The Texas Science and Engineering Fair Blue Ribbon finalist, Lily Bobby. Give her a round of applause. Now, this science fair award first starts with competition at the regional level in which Lily earned a first place ranking in the area of biochemistry. She got countless days early in the morning to go up to the school to run various experiments on saliva and a certain enzyme that dissolves starch in your mouth. Right? Yeah. And so it's really interesting, but probably a little bit too complex for us to have her explain right here. So now, what's important is that she got first place at regional and qualified to go to state competitions, which is super competitive. And what they do is they do elimination rounds. So you've got three rounds, and so we go through the first round, advanced out of that in the second round, advanced out in the second round, and through the third round. So she is clearly one of the top performers in science in the state of Texas. And we'd like to also thank Ron Malaski, who helps support her out there. Ron, thanks for all your help. She briefed me very well earlier. Now, the next thing I'd like to go on to then is the American Chemical Society, United States National Chemistry Olympiad. We'd like to recognize Augustine Esteve and Logan Ierogus. Give them a round of applause. Now, this award, if I understand this correctly from my briefing earlier, they take a super hard test, a chemistry test. About 250 to 300 folks in the region take this test, and only the top few that score qualify to go on to the national competition. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so how hard is the test? It's really hard. Yeah, and so, so this one, Malaski, was explaining to me just how competitive this is. And so we're super excited to have these folks recognize us as one of the few in the state of Texas that proceed to compete at the national level. Congratulations. Thanks, Ron. You did a great job briefing me. Now, as I progress to this big plaque in front of me, I'm actually going to do the group and then do the subgroups. So the next group that I want to ask you guys to applaud before I get into the specifics are Alma Heights High School State Law, both the boys and the girls team. Round of applause for these groups. Now, first, we're going to meet the girls team, and then we'll end with their coach to explain this season. Now, tell us your name, what grade, grade. to explain this season. Now, tell us your name and what grade you're in.
I'm Jordan Salisbury, I'm a senior.
I'm Javlin Zol, and I'm a junior.
I'm Ella Williams, and I'm a junior.
I'm Mary Louise Kechek, and I'm a junior.
I'm Joy Losak, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Charlotte A, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Julia Volmer, another freshman.
I'm Kat Salberg.
All right, and then we have with us Coach Brent McQuiston. Tell us about the state championship team.
Could we request that those ladies stand up? It's hard to see you, and we've got folks trying to take pictures. There we go.
While the picture's being taken, I'll go ahead and tell you about these young ladies and about their journey. First, I want to thank, got to thank the board, and Dr. Bouchard, Coach Riddman. You don't get to where these young ladies got without extensive travel. Traveling all over the state, going to different tournaments, playing against great teams on great golf courses. That requires getting out of town. And in August, getting out of town was not a popular idea. And they supported us, they believed in us, and without that, we're not here. It just doesn't happen. And thank you guys so much for hanging in there with us and letting us do that. Thank you. These young ladies, I, obviously, when you're holding the state championship trophy and you're wearing the state championship medal, you have done something incredibly special. And I'm going to share just one moment that represents all the young people in this room in some shape, form, or fashion. There was a time during this tournament where weather rolled in, and it didn't roll, it hit with a giant punch. And I'm standing in the fairway with this little freshman right here, and I, and as y'all can tell, I'm not exactly in the cover of Slim Fast Magazine. And I had got my legs spread way apart, with my umbrella completely sideways, just trying to stand up. That just tells you the magnitude of the weather situation. This one out here turns to me and looks at me with a grin on her face, and she didn't say it, but she might as well said, "Coach, we just want a state championship." Because she knew none of the other teams were going to be as tough as her and her teammates. I jump in the cart, I go check on every one of them. They're wearing, they got their jackets on, their extra gloves, their towels, and to a girl, giant smiles on their faces. And it's blowing 35 or 40, rain's blowing right straight sideways. And they are pumped. They know that they are about to get this done. That lasted about 30 minutes. They played that section of holes in one other. Played the whole backside, and maybe one over, and win the state championship by four. That's a testament to this community, their parents, and the expectations of this community. Everywhere you look, there's potential for greatness, and I'm so blessed to be a part of it. Thank y'all.
That's all right. We got to work the plan. Got a plan, we got to work the plan. We got to look through, film, so you can see everybody. Great job, great job. Come on down, boys. And so let's have the, let's keep you guys standing like last time, so it's easier to see. Now, we're going to talk about the boys' golf team who qualified for state. Let's find out who's here. We're going to hand over the coaches on hand.
I'm Cameron Simon, I'm a junior.
I'm Christopher Scott, I'm a senior.
I'm Nicholas Wheeler, I'm a junior.
I'm Trevor Winton, I'm a senior.
I'm Senator Tate, I'm a senior.
Coach Kim Morgan, assistant coach.
And I'm, and I'm Coach Randy Morrissey, head boys' golf coach. It's always difficult following Coach McQuiston. The girls did a fantastic job. I'm extremely proud of these guys. It was a very interesting year, several ups and downs, but they rose to the occasion, played well, and got us to state, and we plan on returning next year. So, and thank y'all for taking the time to recognize us.
Coach Riddman, you mind walking over here while we're going? All right, all right. Now, thanks for standing up. Next, we have, the next group we want to recognize are the state track and field participants. I'm going to name their, I'll say their names for them, and then I'll say the event, and then I'm going to ask, the coaches are actually standing behind. That's a nice job staging. I didn't even know. And so, well, all of these three track and field athletes in front of you represent folks that have competed at the state track, which is a big deal, right? And so I'm going to, I'd like to, yeah, let's just clap after each one, right? So I'm going to say first, actually, can I start with Amari first? This is Amari Vakris Kianis, right? She was a, ran the 400-meter dash champion in the district level, area level, regional level. She broke a state, a school record on her way to qualifying for the state meet in which she placed 7th place. Let's clap for her.
I'm a senior.
Leah, right. So Leah Bowman is a sophomore. At the state track meet in the pole vault, placed silver medalist, 2nd place with a height of 15 feet 6 inches. Let's clap for her. That's a four, right? That's four. Nice. And then Connor McGrath is a junior. He runs the 400-meter, and he, at the state track meet, he got 8th place, breaking his personal best of a 49.74. That's a bookie. Congratulations. And behind every great athlete is a great coach literally tonight. And so, how would you tell, introduce yourself and tell us about your pathing.
Thank you. Howie Beara, I coached the pole vaults dirt track. I got tremendous competitive right here in front of me. Again, as mentioned, he was a sophomore. This journey pretty much started probably last year when COVID shut us down. After the third track meet, he was bulking 12 and 1/2 feet at the time, so freshman, and I knew he was on his way up. Well, he didn't take that year off. He got after it behind the scenes. I think we opened up this year with our track season, and our first two track meets were canceled, and I knew he was chomping at the bit. We opened up with our first track meet at the Alamo Heights, Mills Relays at Heroes, where he broke the school record for the first time with 15.1. Won that, and it was, we just rolled on from there. So several track meets after that, he went 15.4, broke it again, and then we went to area. We got the regionals. He was competing with a young man of Westlake. Right? Where was he from?
Gregory Portland.
Gregory Portland. Great competition that night. They were both at the 15-foot level. And I think on his first attempt, he came down off the bar and he slit his chin level. So that didn't stop him. Like I said, at that point, he qualified for state. We went into Austin with great open, the goals were set in front of us, and the young man really just did a great job. He ended up 2nd, ranked the record again for 15.6. And like I said, he's a sophomore, so we've got several more years with this young man. So very proud of his efforts this year.
Hey, I'm Randy Osborne, I'm the head track coach, and I have the pleasure of coaching Connor here in the 400 meters. And for those of you who don't know what the 400 meters is, it's probably the toughest race in all track. It is brutal. And this kid, I tell you, he did a phenomenal, phenomenal job this year. It's not easy to go out and run 400 after 400 after 400 or 300 when it's 95 degrees outside. It's tough. And so he put in a lot of hard work, and it paid off. He broke one record this year that he was shooting for, and that was the Beatty Brothers track. So he got that this year. And so, you know, I have just the pleasure of coaching. It's a pleasure to work with all three of these kids. They're not only outstanding athletes, they're great kids. I mean, they're just great people. And they're great representatives of this district. And so it's a pleasure coaching, and I look forward to them doing great things next year.
I'm Brian Riggins, the head girls' track coach. And I echo what these guys said, they just had a great season, great kids. If you've been to the high school, the track is in like piles right now. There isn't a track. And so they spent most of the season with about a lane, a lane and a half all the way around, but they never complained, never it was an issue. And then we had to go to another track during, during practice for the end of the season. So, and again, they came to work hard every day. Only nine people get to go to the state meet in each event out of, I don't know, 1,000 athletes who started out at the district level. So to be in the final nine in the state of Texas is a pretty big deal. So, school record, Laura Nell, Laura, so congratulations. And she's also back next year as well.
Thank you. We're going to see this the last athletic team. Ron, wrap it up about all of these recognitions tonight for the athletic program.
Yeah, thank you, Frank. Well, first of all, a couple of things. One, congratulations to all the athletes and coaches. We couldn't be more proud of what you accomplished this year. I'm going to start back in September, and like we did then, is I want to thank the board for allowing us to do what we do. We think, we think these athletes bring a lot to our, to our community and our school and our, and our programs. And they had every reason, every built-in excuse not to be successful this year. But because of who they are and the coaching they received, we're all, here's what's amazing to me, and I hope the community, I hope y'all feel this. We had to write down the letters A through J to recognize state champions and state this and state, that doesn't go on everywhere. And I hope nobody here just takes that for granted. What these young athletes did this year is remarkable. So we appreciate all the sacrifice, the hard work. When nobody's watching, you know, it's kind of cool to go to the state track meet when there's a ton of people watching. And it's cool to go to the state golf tournament and all the other things when there's people watching. They were successful because of what they do when nobody's watching. And that says a lot about their determination, perseverance, and just the hard work mentality. And that's what I'm excited about, because they're going to take it with them when they leave Alamo Heights. And they're going to be successful in whatever they do. So big congratulations to all the athletes, the coaches, for what you've accomplished this year. And hopefully that just set the bar for us to raise for next year. So congratulations.
All right. Great job, all of you for hanging around. I appreciate you sharing the love with these folks. Our next, boy, I've got too many recognitions. I've got multiple pages there. Our next recognition is for our Alamo Heights High School JRTC. I'm going to, there's two of us, so let me get it all out. National Physical Fitness Champions and National Drill Team Champions. Give them a round of applause. Now, this team was busy, so I have to explain a little bit before we get to introduce you all here. And so in April, at the end of April, this team went to the National High School Drill Team and Fitness Challenge Championships in Daytona Beach, Florida. Now, there's boys, the boys' fitness team and the girls' fitness team. They competed in five different events. Started with a 1.8 mile run in physical team obstacle course on a beach, followed by pull-ups, flex-arm hang, broad jump, and seated power throw. At the end of all the various competitions, so many Alamo Heights, JRTC students awarded points in so many categories, that as an entire team, both the boys won the national championship and the girls won the national championship. Let's clap for that. In addition to that, and I don't know if this came before or after all the physical and ruling things, they also competed in the Cologuard competitions. And so the boys' team placed 3rd in the nation, and the girls' team was the, won their 10th national championship in Cologuard. Let's clap for that. Now, let's meet these students. Tell us your name, what grade you're in, and what we're going on.
Santiago McLun, I'm a senior.
I'm Madeline Edgber, I'm a senior.
Charlie McCormick, I'm a senior.
Oskar Corvino, I'm a senior.
Anthony Wise, I'm a junior.
Nadal Alana, I'm a senior.
Kenya, I'm a junior, I'm a sophomore.
Amy Tarp, I'm a sophomore.
Ismael Lada, I'm a junior.
Mark Jones, a junior.
Bailey Boye, a freshman.
Felicia Luna, and I'm a freshman.
Senior, Professor Ramirez, I'm a sophomore.
Emma Wei, senior, and I'm a freshman.
Emma Gracie, I'm a, and I'm a junior.
William Kiefer, I'm a freshman.
Thomas Clapton, I'm also a freshman.
Caleb Finley, senior.
Wow. What a great, uh, congratulations. Of course, standing behind to support this team are Colonel Diaz and Spur Sergeant Jasper Miller. Tell us a little bit about this team, for the talk.
The officer.
First of all, my, so, Coach Riddman, Dr. Bouchard, and the board, this couldn't have been possible without your support, bottom line. And the day I came here, there's no, like, disagreement, all this talking, this, we told him to come back or something. So that's what, yeah, and I, and I reminded the team what, you know, what this meant to you, and also the community in Alamo Heights, and of course, our front. It pays off. We have our PT training in really Cologuard, it's always at 6:00 in the morning to 7:30 Monday through Friday. These outstanding young adults, students, cadets, they're there every morning, pretty much 100%. So once again, it's, you've got good days, bad days, just like in any other athletic, so it obviously pays off. What was unique about this trip, this is what we went there, is that we're one of the smallest schools that go there. I mean, usually, some schools have about 40, 50 people. This year, for the biggest group, we took 31. And we're in the game of each PT team report that have 12 participants. So that's 24. And then, of course, we also had the tour on the scrap of the Cologuard. We have also, remember that the dual had, the dual balls really had PT. And we competed the select nine out of that group. And the challenge is that, you know, you can have two, three, or four athletes, but then you got to have nine that are, really are good at each of those five events. And also, one thing that was not mentioned, in the 1.8 run, they had to run, the male had to run, they, with, you know, within a number, you probably see the proximity of the school, they're turning for 1.8 miles, you know, on the sand. And then once we got there on that, they go right into the physical fitness. Several options going on. So one thing, the spirit of Alamo Heights mules kind of magically happened. And I said that because I've been doing this for now 13 years. We were pretty much around 2nd, 3rd in our events, going into the last three events, which was the pull-ups, flex-arm hang, and the power throw. We had to do that indoors. And we were the first ones up in each event, so sometimes it kind of, you got to set the pace. So we ended up in a total, a flex-arm hang with the women, and the next thing you know, they're, you know, you got to hold it on the bar for so many minutes. And then all of a sudden, you got these young ladies that are going beyond what they practiced, that are, you know, personal high, and got into it. Well, all of a sudden, the males saw that, and we just started walking along. The only people you could hear in that entire building was Alamo Heights. And it just like, the spirit of the mule came out, you know. But it happened, and I couldn't believe it. And then, my man here, Oster, in a power seated throw, when we sit down, and you know, the record was, Jersey National Record was 26 feet. And we didn't know that was a record, you know. So he sat down, and the person he launched was 30 feet. So he goes wild. The entire group, he just, I mean, he just go crazy. And midway, all of a sudden, energy starts coming out of it, gets electrifying. And all of a sudden, he went down for 2nd, 31, 31 feet. And that time, he goes wild, and just kind of falls in there. But it was interesting, and a man came up to me, and I'm just standing like, I gave him the first arm, and he says, "Which school is this?" I said, "Alamo Heights, where you all from?" "San Antonio, Texas." He says, "Wow, man, you've got a great team here." And then the commanding general, commanding general John Evans just kind of looked at us, and I think we just kind of really, you know, lit up the place. So once again, we did an outstanding job. At the end, when I, we finished, you know, we gathered around, and I all of a sudden, I told him to be quiet. And then I said, "What do you hear?" We are the strength. We walked every knee that we really had in the court at the awards ceremony. It's traditional there, several schools go from different states. It's, it's traditional there, several schools go from different states. Texas is well represented. So anything, anybody from Texas, anybody who heard the word Texas, it's gonna echo around the, the awards ceremony. So you heard Texas a lot that night.
Yeah.
Once again, so, once again, thank you very much for allowing us to make this. And of course, on the color guard and, uh, outstanding color guards.
Uh, let me just talk to you guys real quick about the color guard. What the colonel did say is that the color guard members also part of the PTT team. So, unique situation happened while half the team was on the beach competing. I had to strategically take color guard members out so they could start getting ready for the color guard competition, which was in the late morning, early afternoon. They gave us an opportunity or a great spirit since we were competing for the physical fitness challenge, to let us go last for color guard. And I told the cadets and I always tell them that what wins championships is attitude and effort. That's what wins championships. So I told the color guard team, hey, we are going last. You are the last visible piece that the judges will see. You know, make this count. And they were tired. We had to walk, I think it was half mile from the competition to the actual event. They had to change out of their PTT uniform and change into a, their army uniform. And then they competed. And when it was all said and done, I knew that they had won. And I told all, all the drill members, guys, you just don't know what's about to happen. But if you keep doing what you're doing with the effort and attitude, we gonna, uh, uh, change hearts, we gonna change minds, and we gonna set progress tonight. Uh, I could not believe when we won all those first and second place trophies. I could not believe it. Because this was the first time that we ever competed in, in physical fitness. The girls, the girls color guard team, they have a tradition here at Alamo Heights that we always have a strong color guard presence at the national level. This, this year surprised me, because I wasn't expecting that. They rose to another level that really shocked everyone. And when they caught Alamo Heights third place, I was excited for the males. That's the first time my male team ever won a place at the national competition. So I was excited. So when they finally said first place teams is the lady moves from Alamo Heights, the place of running. And, and I just didn't know what to say to them, but I just watched the kids run out there, grab that trophy, and just let it go. Uh, that was the best moment of my life, to be honest. I felt so proud. And it goes back, yes. Uh, we, we practice every morning at five o'clock. And what I love about Alamo Heights and this community and, and the school is that at six o'clock, the lights are on, the kids are out working, they busting their butt in the weight room, they running around the school property, they are making things happen when it's easy to tap out and just say COVID, I'm down on COVID. But not here. Not here. And that's what I love about it. I always compliment the coaches because they out there pushing, pushing, pushing hard. And the kids are not giving up. So that's what I love about it. And, and, you know, I love this community. Thank you, guys.
Man, I'm fired up. So Nancy, I lost her in crap. Way bad, man. Hey, sorry, I lost you. Our, our final recognition and delegation, so everybody stay, but please. We want to hear what the high school student code is up to as we wind out of the year. Nancy, let us know what's going on.
Hi, so in these past couple of weeks, student council has been a lot. We've actually had the senior recognition breakfast and we had tacos. It was a lot of fun. And we also recognized our teachers and staff and we got tacos for them as well. Um, we recently just had prom week and that went perfectly. It was beautiful. And actually, we just last week had the talent show and it was a great turnout with a thousand students all being socially distanced in the auditorium. So, yeah, that's what we've been up to.
All right. Thank you for all of your work. You've been a great audience. That's the end of our delegations and recognitions. And so if you're here for that alone and not business portion, this is a great night of the league. And if you're staying here for the business portion, same back, just give everybody a few minutes. Thank you, congratulations to everybody.
Yes.
Thanks. How are you? Good.
Give one more moment to let the crowd think out.
Oh, thank you.
So when they get to like put their scores that they have to sign.
Okay. Gotcha.
And then I give it to Melissa.
Okay. Who notarizes them? Melissa?
I did. All right. The next item on our agenda is citizens to be heard. We have received nine requests to speak on a published comment about an item that is not on the agenda. Couple of things to remember as we go through this. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Emma, for the last time, will hold up a card when there is one minute left in the speaker's time, and then another card when the time is up. We'd ask each speaker to respect the card in order to keep this an orderly process. It's gotta be three minutes each. I hate to have to interrupt you and cut you off, but we have to stop at three minutes. In making your presentation, we ask that you not refer to individual students or personnel by name or position, especially given the fact we are in a public setting. It is best to be careful with comments about specific people. In addition, by state law, we want you to understand that the board is not allowed to respond to your comments. We welcome and appreciate you coming here and providing your input, but we cannot answer any questions and we cannot respond. We'd also like, since we have quite a few people here, to respect each person's opinion, allow each person to have their three minutes to be heard. With that, we are ready to begin with Mr. Eric Cruz and Ms. Sarah Jo Le Mesere will be on deck.
Dr. Bashara, Dr. Alphato, Dr. Walker, esteemed school board of Alamo Heights and District School District. My name is Eric Dean Cruz and I'm the president of the Alamo Heights Education Association. AHTA is a local chapter of TSTA and NEA. And our goal as a local union is to continue to build strong relationships with our district administrators and school board to work in the best interest of this school district. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before the esteemed body, but before I go into the hard part remarks, I want to again acknowledge your remarkable job done by our teachers and support staff through 2020, 2021's tenure. This difficult year of dedication, the love, and the expertise of the people who work here every day. The year experienced by our students is because of an unwavering support for the purpose of public education, to uphold a strong democracy built on fairness and access. In short, equity. It is the subject of equity that brings me here tonight on the part of medical chapter. AHTA is thankful for the work of Dr. Walker and the Equity Council established by our district as a work to create a district where every student is seen and valued for who they are. It is a moral imperative to make sure that discrimination affecting any student as it relates to racism, classism, sexism, sexual orientation discrimination, gender identification discrimination, and myriad other ways continues to be a trocar for our district. We are thankful and eager to work with the Equity Council in building a culture that seeks to empower all students, to acknowledge finally the full measure of a person's value regardless of who they are. We know that the decision to address equity is not an easy one. We know that there is much to discuss and many hard conversations to consider as we move towards the best version of AHISD. This union stands ready to gain fully in those conversations and to listen. We are also ready to take action with you in the best interests of our students. We look forward to supporting the ethical premise on which equity is built, the ability for every person to realize the incredible potential of our humanity. Thank you for listening to me tonight and for the duration of this year. And as a spokesperson of this group, I thank you very much for everything that you have done for us. I look forward to the work of Lysinett. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Lane.
Lamesh.
Lamesh. And next will be Ruth Bahanamore.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for this opportunity to address you regarding a number of issues that are on my mind and in my heart. I am Sarah Jo Le Mesher. I'm a lifelong resident of Alamo Heights and I taught in the district for over twenty-five years. Off and on during that time, I have participated in school board election campaigns, some more contentious than others. But the most recent campaign was unprecedented in at least two ways. First, the politicizing of a school board campaign, at least in Alamo Heights, is unheard of and was thus until a letter from the vice chair of the Bear County Republican Party on party letterhead was widely circulated. While this letter is not illegal, it seems to me to be unethical and inflammatory at best and far from the tradition of non-partisanship for school board membership. The second issue of this campaign that is troubling to me and the one with which you are all painfully aware, is the matter of vandalism of over forty properties within the school district boundaries, my yard being one of them. While I do not wish to imply that anyone on the board has a direct association with the vandals, the rhetoric expressed in Mrs. Ozin Howard's letter and the fact that the damaged yards all displayed signs for Travis Wiltshire, a supremely qualified candidate who happens to be black, signal to me overt racism. And that is the issue that this board must confront head on. This underscores why the work of the Equity Council is so important. The work must continue. Additionally, there are new families in the community who don't feel like their voices are being heard. And please remember, forty-three percent of the voters in the school board election voted for a candidate who was not only imminently qualified, but represented fresh ideas and different perspectives and diversity. Your colleague, David Hornberger, in the most recent issue of School of Views stated, and I quote, "Our work is grounded in the hope that we will in fact solve community problems that much of our country faces. I personally hope to calm the fires of political division, to prevent shame and fear from holding us back from collectively becoming greater," close quote. I strongly urge the members of this school board to join Mr. Hornberger in accepting the daunting opportunity for healing a divided and hurting community. Thank you.
Next will be Mr. Travis Wiltshire. And after that will be Ruth Bahanamore.
Well, good evening. I was hoping to be sitting around and bullshit today, but unfortunately that didn't happen. I wanted to first of all, just say good evening to the Alamo Heights School Board. And again, my name is Travis Wiltshire. I wanted to just say I love Alamo Heights, I loved them before the election, and I love them after the election. The, uh, the election was very competitive, went to the sphere, and I officially lost. Uh, in spite of the outcome, um, I'm really excited that I received forty-three percent of the vote. I want to give the, uh, the board a heartfelt thank you for your comments. You never fail to disappoint them. Regarding the events that have occurred in our neighborhood recently, I personally don't believe in any of the candidates, had anything to do with anything that has happened. You know, with everything going on, I wanted to publicly show my support for our old as well as our new board members. I wanted to congratulate Clay as well as Carrie on the victories. I want to publicly say that I support both of you as, as we move, as we move forward. Uh, maybe someday I'll be, in future, I'll be on the board as well. I also, I'm here to support my other fellow neighbors that fully supported me throughout this process, throughout the election. And, uh, and I, I really was saddened that any of this seemed to have anything to do with my yards, uh, my sign keeping their yards. I'm sadly disappointed by what occurred, but I look forward to the day when the authorities solve the case and bring the perpetrators to justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Ruth Bahanamore. And after that will be, back to the day Felice.
Dear Dr. Bashara, President Anderson, and board members. I come to you with a heavy heart tonight. Recently, it has come to my attention that there are many homes vandalized in our Alamo Heights community. These homes had chemical agents filled into their yards and the chemicals kill rose bushes, hobbies, grass, and other many things in the yard. And when I asked her on Ken's five news report and on social media, there were forty-two plus homes hit. Ninety-seven percent of these homes all had roving and uncommon. They had the arxan's support for a school board candidate who was black. It is not a stretched say, but this can be likened to the burning of the crosses back in the fifties and sixties by hate groups, on the long of black people or along those who support black people. Some would scoff and say, come on now, this is different. Others would say it's absurd to me that I could make a connection to such heinous historical times. I assure you that it is not absurd. There are similarities. The intent is to intimidate people and frankly, it is working. That reason, sorry. That this could happen in 2021 is appalling, that this happened in our beloved community is atrocious. I am a proud member of Alamo Heights Equity Council and I have heard some folks in our community say that they do not understand why we even need such a council, that everything is fine here, that we do not have racism or racist behaviors in our community. Conversely, I have also been told by others that racism is still alive and well in our AHISD stomping grounds in both the covert and overt ways, that we need to tackle these issues that our students encounter. I greatly appreciate the school, the school board stating an argument today at the beginning of this meeting. This is all in this bullying behavior demonstrating to our students and families that it is not only this behavior is not acceptable, but that our school's leadership insists on accountability for what is happening, if for no other reason than to demonstrate to our children that we hold ourselves to the standards to the typical limit. It is clear that much work still has to be done in 2021 and beyond. I hope to continue, excuse me, I hope that you will continue to stand for fairness for the right of people to support the AC fit without a fee of retribution and for teaching our kids how to handle differences of opinion when we have them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next will be back to the day Felice and Anne David, you will be next.
Hi. Thank you so much for hearing my comments from the community. My name is Becky Felice. I'm a parent of a student who is an incoming junior student. Totally shocking to me. But at any rate, my family moved to Alamo Heights about six years ago for the same reason that most families with young children move here, because of the excellence, the thorough district reputation for excellence. And in our time here, our daughters thrive. Every year, her teacher is the best teacher she's ever had and her favorite, which has not involved her previous teachers. She's made great friends, actually, am I too short for this microphone? Sorry. Um, she's made great friends and we have never felt that her academic education was anything less than outstanding. However, the district is more than academics. The community that surrounds us impacts our children's social and emotional development. When our district students speak out about their negative experiences with discrimination or racism within this district, it is our responsibility as community members to ensure that no current or future students feel that type of impact. I was really optimistic when Alamo Heights leadership announced the formation of the Equity Council to address the concerns of students, teachers, and parents. And I was very surprised and disappointed to find that there are families within our district who are opposed to the council and to hear that there is wild speculation and misinformation circulating about the council, its goals, and its implementation. Considering that community stakeholders were invited to apply or nominate a student or fellow stakeholder over several months and that the 2020-2021 board discussed and supported the formation, I believe that if a community member is unaware of the council or was unaware of the council is not due to any efforts by the district to quote, "slip it in the side door." We're all busy, we all miss things, but the accountability lies with us as individuals. I'm asking that the incoming board thoughtfully evaluate the recommendations of the Equity Council and take into consideration the time that was given to these efforts by their neighbors, fellow parents, students, and district personnel, as well as the post... Sorry. I missed a sentence. And I cannot... The efforts by our neighbors, fellow parents, students, and district personnel, as well as the support in implementing this council by the previous board and the stated support by one of the incoming trustees. Equitable education by definition is ensuring that every student, regardless of race, gender, orientation, ability, or socioeconomic status, has access to an excellent education. I cannot imagine that anyone in this community would have noticed that. And to end, the incident that's been referred to, I really appreciate the statement of your statement. But I have to just break it. Right now, this is K D R.
Next is Anne David, and Irene Valdez, you will be next.
Hello. It's an honor and a privilege to address you this evening. I am also a member of the Equity Council, and my work with the district, even though I've only been here six years, goes back further. I was part of the discovery group for the new strategic planning, a partner in the profile, and was on the task force after David's last suicide. And one of the reasons I keep saying yes is because I see actions happening from the planning. I'm an academic. I've sat on lots of planning committees for lots of strategic plans that get stuck in a drawer and never looked at again. But that doesn't happen here. And not only does that not happen here, but the community members and faculty and staff and administrators and board members who are part of this work commit to it, believe in it, and make hard decisions to implement it. And that doesn't happen everywhere. The excellence of our students that we saw earlier is part of what is then happening with the excellence of the faculty, staff, administrators, and board. Like, that feeds off of itself in a really positive way, and so I am so honored to continue to be a part of that work. And as many of you have heard and many of my fellow professors have said, the Equity Council is moving forward. And this work has been good. The next stage is harder and will take more bravery on every one part. Because, to pick up what the previous speaker was going to say, this is who we are. Both the excellence of the students, the excellence of the staff, the faculty, everyone, and community members who would vandalize homes within the community of neighbors, of friends, of people in the community, of, again, those of us here. So it is who we are. And that's hard. That's really hard to think about. But if there's any community that will put in the work to do it, I think that I'm standing in it. I too moved here because I've heard so many good things. And I am so grateful to be here, and I'm willing to put in the work ahead. And I hope that the board, my fellow Equity Council members, the staff, the administrators, the teachers, and the students will be on board with me. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you. Irene Valdez, and Ms. Lisa Fox is next.
Hi, I'm Irene Valdez, and I am not part of the Equity Foundation or the Equity Council. I am a parent that addressed the council last month regarding masks and the usage of masks at the school. I have sent seven different pieces of correspondence to the board, and not one person bothered to acknowledge that I had sent anything to them or to even call me back to talk about the request that I had made. I'm very concerned about our kids and our teachers, the fact that they're having to wear the mask after the governor has stated that we don't have to wear masks any longer. I think it's a disservice to our kids. I think it's a disservice to our teachers and to the other staff in our district. And I would ask that the board reconsider and issue a statement changing our policy to optional, where if the kids or the teachers or employees want to wear a mask, they can wear a mask. But I sent letters March 16th, April 12th, April 16th, April 19th, April 28th. April 28th, I sent another letter to another staff member at the district asking for numbers of COVID patients that the school had had. At that time, I was told that I was going to get the information back later. Today is a month later almost, and I still have received nothing. So I'm really disappointed that a parent would make a request and the school or the school board didn't even bother to acknowledge it. Very disappointed. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Lisa Fox, and next will be Tori Richmond.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Fox. I have four children in the district. I came here tonight to talk about next school year and how it will look in August. With the governor's executive board this week, I had to change my speech, but my message is the same. I want us to work together as a community and to reunite the school. With all the division and the hate this year has created, I believe the best for our children is to work together and find solutions that work for everyone and not just one side. While most of us adults are fully vaccinated, our children are not. And while it's not a mandate, we should still follow the science. Do you know that class we teach our students? We should have parents and teachers and administrators encourage mask wearing the rest of this year and the next year, especially for the ages that are not fully vaccinated. Let's be honest with our children and tell them the truth. I tell mine that you are more than likely not to sow science or catch COVID or spread it, but that there's a 0.09% chance you can get really sick. And no, I do not know the long-term effects to your health. And that you can potentially spread it to your peers that have asthma and other upper respiratory diseases that COVID does affect more than it possibly. If you had a child that was at higher risk, how would you feel about your child going to school with no mask? If we no longer wear masks, will we still provide COVID testing weekly to students that want? Will we make students quarantine for 10 days if they test positive for COVID? Will we provide adequate online learning to special education students if they have to quarantine? I understand the low risk of children catching COVID and spreading it. However, I think all children should matter, not just the healthy ones. Alamo Heights does have a disability community that I'm sure would appreciate us keeping on masks until that we all get vaccinated or want to get vaccinated. Let's avoid more mental health problems within our children and stop the back-and-forth quarantine and online learning or back-and-forth face-to-face. I have seen that with my children. It really did affect their mental health. And by that, if we wear masks, we can make that not happen, make it lower risk of happening. Let us be, let us not be an example, but set the example to show our children what it really means to care for one another and to consider all people and not just ourselves. I will end with a quote, "Indifference and neglect often do much more damage than outright disliking a mask." Thank you.
Thank you. And Tori Richmond is our last speaker.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to all of us speak and share our concern with you. I want to thank you all for making this school year happen. I didn't think schools would open for this school year, and then I didn't think they'd stay open. I've been very impressed by the way you all handled this year of getting our kids into the classroom. However, I implore you to make masks optional for students and staff now. Just today, it was announced that starting June 1st, summer school will be mask optional. I'm having a hard time understanding what changes between now and June 1st to make masks optional. I have to tell my fourth grader every day to take off her mask when I pick her up at school. She's gotten to where she doesn't notice it, and worse, I think she is more comfortable with it on. She hides behind that thing. She is shy by nature, and the mask has become a crutch for her to speak as little as possible. When we go to a restaurant, my kids leave their masks on until their food arrives. My husband and I tell them it's okay to take their masks off, but they don't want to. This may seem like a parenting issue, my kids not listening to me, but I see it more as an issue of implication. They have been forced to cover their faces for hours and hours a day for fear of getting into trouble, for fear of getting sick, for fear of offending someone by not wearing their masks. Our culture of care has turned into a culture of fear. I realize there's only one week left of school, but please, make masks optional now. Unfortunately, my own kids will probably opt to wear their masks, but at least they'll have the choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight to speak to us, and we appreciate you taking the time to do so. We will now move on to section five, items for presentation of possible action for the board. First is item 5A, board goal number two. Alamo Heights ISD Profile of the Learner, Dr. Frank Alpar. I didn't mean it. Save the crowd. I'll wait for the folks to sit down before you move. Well, now that you've cleared the room, we'll get on to item 5A. Dr. Alpar will address consideration of approval of intent to adopt the renewal of District of Innovation status. Uh, Alpar?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I do know that Ron Rippon is in the parking lot and said that he found some earphones in cash. If he lost anything, come on up and we'll help to identify that. You have to obviously tell us how much it was and what kind of earphone. But if you guys hear anybody's lost something, let me know, and we can, we can handle that. All right, so this is the third or fourth time I've presented, so I thought I would not show the slides again to just remind the general public that I presented twice before on the District of Innovation process and how the state has built in various touchpoints. A quick overview for those who didn't hear those other presentations. The legislature, a couple of sessions ago, gave all districts some flexibility around various state rules that are designed to help ease bureaucratic burdens on your school, but also help you to kind of achieve your local missions. And so when this first came out, Alamo Heights applied for, jumped into this process and became a District of Innovation, and it gave us flexibility around several bureaucratic elements. For example, we get to start school earlier than the state requires. That's a big boost. The community loves that because we can get out before Memorial Day. And there's a variety of things like that. I've listed that out on the first two board meetings that we've talked about it in March and April. Today's the next step in the process. We're not done yet. And so the consideration for you all today is just to pass a motion that says we as a district intend to continue pursuing the process. I'll remind everyone that our District Site-Based Committee, known as our District Education Advisory Council, voted unanimously in April to proceed with the final draft of the new District of Innovation application, which will allow us to maintain these flexibilities for another five years. So with this approval of the intent to pursue it, there's, I have it posted on the website, the requisite number of days. And we will come back to you one more time in June to ask for your consideration to actually approve our submission of our application to the commissioner. Once that's done, then we can renew our status for another five years. So I ask your consideration to approve the intent to adopt the renewal of our District of Innovation status.
Thank you, Dr. Alpar. Does anyone have any questions? We've had several presentations on this. Do I have a motion to approve the intent to adopt the renewal of District of Innovation status? A second? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Alpar. Item 5A2 is the presentation of Summer School 2021. Dr. Jimmy Walker.
All right, good evening. Good evening. So the next two agenda items are companion pieces because they all hinge on the COVID impact and our response to that impact. So I'll do the first part, which is summer school, and then pause any questions, and then I'll go on and do the second part, which is about reopening schools next year and remote learning. So I'm going to start by just grounding it all with just some basic information about the impact of COVID that we're seeing. We have been tracking our standardized scores, we've been tracking attendance, we've been tracking grades all year long. And when you compare where we are as a community in Alamo Heights to what we're seeing in research that's emerging across the US, we are in a really good place. Across the US, research is emerging that says students are eight, six to eight months behind in unfinished learning, but we are seeing in our own scores overall commensurate of where we have been in years past, which is a wonderful thing. However, we also know that the full extent of unfinished learning may come up next year. So small learning losses may result in larger gaps next year. What I mean by this is if you're a third grader and you didn't master place value in third grade, when you hit fourth grade and you go into decimal place value, that gap may emerge. We also are seeing that the gap is larger in younger grades than in older, which makes sense. Our attendance has been all lower grades, and younger grades don't have the independence to learn at home than we see in older grades. So we do see more of an impact in younger grades. Beyond academics, we also know that our students are at risk of disconnecting from school and the school community. It's hard if you haven't been in school for a whole year and your friends have been having lunch every day and you haven't to come back in and reconnect with school. So we know that that's something we need to address as well. But at the end, lost time just equals lost learning. So our first intervention hinges on summer school, which is going to begin next month. We are proud of our summer school program here in Alamo Heights. We approach it differently. It always has a camp theme. We bring in animals from our region center. We go on field trips. We have make-believe campfires. It is a really engaging experience, and it will be so again. The students that we're targeting this year, the audience is a little different because we're purposely addressing students that have been at the greatest, have had the greatest impact of COVID on. So this is our early literacy and numeracy summer school. In grades K to 2, we have 75 students signed up for that. Our bilingual education, so our students who are language learners in pre-K and K, we have 22 students signed up for that. Our students who have been in dual language or Spanish immersion, that we did not have the full experience of language learning this year. We have a Spanish fluency camp. We have 175 students signed up for that. In addition, we also have students In addition, we also have students who are at risk for not earning academic credit. And so, we have 42 elementary students. We have, now, this is an approximate because grades aren't in, and kids can pull it out at the end, but we have about 100 junior school students, about 100 high school students who will be coming up to school over the summer, uh, to try to regain some credit. In addition, we have star end-of-course students who need to retest, uh, in grades 9 to 12, and we have about 30 high school students. Again, those scores are coming in, and so it's, it's about. But that's part of our summer school. The other part of our summer is we know that our students do need to recoup some learning loss, but they also need to have some enrichment. So we have some great programs going on this summer to provide enrichment and acceleration, to include camp creativity. Our Odyssey of the Mind program, which is a dynamic program, has their season canceled for two years in a row. So this is an opportunity to restart Odyssey of the Mind, and we have 75 students signed up for that. We also have, one thing we learned from last year is every year we have, um, high school acceleration. This is students who want to take speech, health, government, economics, to get it out of the way, to have more space in their schedule, to take perhaps a two-period culinary class or something else. Last year, when we moved everything online, we offered that completely online. And we heard that, wow, this is pretty convenient because students can participate in summer school, earn these credits, even if they're traveling with their families or they have other things going on and could not come to school for a traditional eight-to-three day. So our acceleration class is online. There is a daily, uh, class. There are office hours. And at the midpoint, there's a student-teacher conference at the midpoint of each of those classes. In addition, Summer at Heights is just booming. Some of the most popular classes are, there's a new pickleball program that's coming in summer school, in Summer at Heights. The sports classes are always popular. STEM classes are incredibly popular. And as of last week, they were already at 70% where we were in 2019. So they have robust signups, and we're excited about bringing Summer at Heights back. So I'm going to pause if there are any questions about summer programs.
Jimmy, thank you for all the work you've done in getting back to summer. That is one step closer to normalcy, which is fantastic. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? David?
So, I love our summer school program. It's come a long way since I went through it, you know, 20 some odd years ago. But a question, like, I know, I know we're providing opportunities for kids who might have slid back a little bit given all the stuff that's happened this year. So I can see engaged families and engaged children self-selecting in. Do we have a way to reach out to folks who have become disengaged? Or maybe they're trying to kind of slide into the background, hopefully not be seen? Have we been able to identify kids, or have any process for doing that?
So, yes, on the summer school, all of those groups that we targeted were, um, talked about in elementary when they had parent conferences, inviting the students to come. A robust outreach program so that we could get students who were struggling, whether they were face-to-face or heights at home, to come back. We were having a lot of students who were maybe at heights at home or are coming back for summer school. Our classes were really small. There's 10 students in a classroom. So it's a great opportunity to begin re-engaging students in our classes.
Any other comments? Thank you very much, Jimmy. You can move on to the next item on the agenda. Heights at Home.
The next item on the agenda. So I've positioned this, talking about all of this is in response to the impact of the pandemic on our students and on our community. So I want to talk a little bit about our proposed plans for Heights at Home for next year, and all of this has a big asterisk by it. Our plans, because we know families want some information, we need to get started planning. It is contingent upon final guidance and funding for the Texas Education Agency, which we don't have as of yet. So all of this is tentative, but this is the way we intend to move forward. We are planning a much smaller remote option for students who have a documented medical need. We fully intend to be back face-to-face 100% next year, but we know that we may have some students who have a documented medical need who need remote instruction, uh, for an extended period. So I'm going to talk through this first section. This is overall. And then I'll talk about some specifics of elementary and secondary. So overall, um, in our Heights at Home, it's open to Alamo Heights students in grades 4 through 12. Students must have documentation of a medical need for remote instruction. This year, there will be an application and an approval process to participate. It requires a commitment of a full semester. There will be schedule changes when students return back into campus. One thing also is that engagement is required. We know students that are more engaged have stronger academic outcomes. So this means an expectation that the camera is on, students are actively participating in class, and that students may need to come to campus for universal screening, final assessments, star exams, teleclass, may need to come to campus for those assessments. There's also a requirement for attendance. In order to be approved within Heights at Home next year, students need to have a 90% attendance rate this year and maintain a 90% attendance rate next year. Grades in core subjects, which is Language Arts, Math, Social Studies, Science, must be at 70 or higher this year and must be maintained at a 70 or higher next year. And students who are served through special education, their ARD committee must also recommend that, um, them for Heights at Home. So, one of the things we have heard this year, and you guys have heard it, you've heard many people come to speak about just how difficult sign-up casting was this year. Our teachers worked incredibly hard to meet the needs of students face-to-face while at the same time meeting the needs of students who are remote. And it's incredibly hard as a teacher. It's incredibly hard as a student to feel fully engaged when you're watching your classroom through a screen and you're watching other kids who are face-to-face. So we are trying really hard to not have sign-on casting. In elementary, it would be self-contained classes. Again, this is contention on enrollment, but the classes would most likely be combined Cambridge-Woodridge. We may have combined grade levels. There would be daily classes. Specials would be recorded. Response to intervention will still be there. Dyslexia will still be there. Gifted and talented services would be one hour a week. And again, students may be required to come to campus for screenings and major assessments. If we have students younger than grade 4 who need this, they can be considered for homebound services, which is through Section 504, which we have had in place for years. In secondary, again, virtual periods, so a teacher might teach Spanish 1, face-to-face, 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 and then a virtual section. Limited, limited, limited sign-ups, only if we have a senior who needs a class to graduate, and we needed to sign up cast that. Because we will only have designated sections, this means we are only offering grade-level section. We are not offering advanced placement. We're not offering advanced courses. It will only be grade level. There's limited electives. It was really hard this year to be fully participatory in a fashion design sewing class when you were doing it from home. So next year, um, limited electives, so courses that require direct hands-on are not available for remote learning. Students who are remote learners will not be participating in UIL. And again, we may require students to come in to take final assessments, screenings, and state assessments. Finally, this is just the timeline. Uh, we already sent out an interest survey, and I'll show you the results in a moment. Jamie Walkland and I hosted a Q&amp;A session with parents yesterday with Maria Almaderas. They're to help us translate in Spanish. We'll send out the application. It will be open through June 4th so that families do have an opportunity to get that medical documentation. And then mid-June, we will notify families of acceptance into Heights at Home. I said that there are specific, um, medical reasons. This is straight from TEA, as cited from CDC, about, um, documented medical need, and it includes things like undergoing dialysis, organ transplant, bone marrow transplant. So some pretty specific reasons that a student might need extended remote learning. So we sent out an interest to all families currently in Heights at Home. And this is the response. We're getting 88% of the families. Now, it hasn't closed yet, but 88% of the family are ready to come back. So when I say we anticipate we much scaled down, we're even saying that that's a need in our community, is a much scaled-down version of Heights at Home for next year. So, in conclusion. The COVID impact, if you all remember last year when we shifted into continuous learning, our mantra that we kept saying was, "We're going to do whatever it takes so that our teachers can keep teaching and our students can keep learning." And that's been the mantra that sustained us through many a difficult decision. What do we need to do so that our teachers can keep learning, can keep teaching, and our students can keep learning? And because of that, we do have work to do. We have some learning losses to address, but the kids are alright. They have come an incredibly far. They've worked hard. They've been resilient. Overall, academic progress and proficiency are commensurate with prior years. We will need a couple of years to address some specific learning gaps, but we absolutely 100% look forward to a return to full face-to-face instruction next year.
Thank you very much, Dr. Walker. And before we turn it open, uh, to full discussion, I want to say thank you from the board for you and everyone else in the administration. The lift you did this year to effectively create two schools within our system, our online platform and our face-to-face platform, was an incredible burden of, uh, resources that we take, and we can't sustain that. And I love to see this shift back to face-to-face. I think our teachers are ready for it. But we can't move forward without acknowledging what a great job you did in the past. I love this plan. It looks balanced and it looks good. I love to see the, uh, responses to your survey. The kids that we think, we're going to meet the needs of those who have documented serious medical needs, but also we're ready to get our kids back in the classroom. So, thank you very much. Anyone else have comments or questions?
Dr. Walker, uh, remind us of the numbers. I know we were at around 10% were in Heights at Home. And so, how many people received the survey that you sent out? I know they haven't all responded yet.
So, um, this is a little getting into the weeds, Stacy, but I'm going to answer you. So when a student is in Heights at Home, there's a little checkmark you have to make in their, um, online enrollment. So currently, with those who have it checked, it was about 800. So this went out to about 800 families.
Thank you. And, um, I guess my follow-up. And we did, we did cover this, you know, this plan in not as much detail as this. I think this is really helpful to see, very well thought out. I love all the different, um, you know, conditions for, you know, participation. It makes, it makes a lot of sense, and I know that you put a ton of thought into it, so I really like that. And I guess I was just wondering, um, if the, if you got, was there any commentary or anything received in the survey process? Or was it just the documented medical need or no?
At this point, the survey is just helping us ascertain the degree to which this is a need in our community, and we're really pleasantly surprised that for the most part, families that have been in Heights at Home are ready, willing, and able to come back to school in the fall.
Okay, thank you.
Cool question.
Anyone?
David? And maybe this could be for Kat later, when she does kind of her annual update. Cause we focus on the academics. I'd love to hear, and I don't want to, you know, ambush you with it now, so maybe for Kat later. But I'd love to hear the analysis of kind of the social emotional wellness, kind of the, the volume that her team may or may not have had to deal with and all that sort of thing, and plans for dealing with all that going forward.
That's great. We've brought in additional counselors to support us during summer as well.
Cool. Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you very much for that presentation. Dr. Walker, just stay in your seat, and you will now be, Item 5A 4, Presentation of 2020 Vision Strategic Goal, Belonging and Equity Update.
It's me again. Alright, uh, so I will say that this year, being the facilitator for Equity Council has been one of the great privileges of my career. I thoroughly enjoyed getting to spend time with our community and engage in this important work. I am going to share tonight a little bit about the process that we've gone through and a little bit about the journey that we've been on. So I'll start by saying, one of the things that I've learned is that, um, words matter and that words mean different things in different contexts. So I think it's really important that when we're talking about equity work, that we define it. We define it within a public school system, and we define it within our public school system here in Alamo Heights. And one of the things that often gets confused is the term equality and equity. So in an equal system, everyone gets the same thing at the same time for the same length of time. And that's important. We need some of that in our schools, absolutely. In an equitable system, resources are provided to students based on their individual needs. With an end goal that each student in Alamo Heights graduates with hope, with opportunity, and with choices. So, Alamo Heights, I said it's important to define it in terms of our local context. It's going to look different in Alamo Heights because we are a unique community. We're unique because of our size. We're not a small rural, 300-student district. We're not a large 100,000-urban district. We are what I think is just right. We are a small town in a big city. We are just shy of 4,900 students. That makes us unique. We have stable enrollment. We are a landlocked. We're not growing. We're not shrinking. And, I'm going to sit here for a moment, we have an incredibly low mobility rate. This means we're at 6%. That means 94% of our students who are with us this year will be with us next year. In Texas, there's a 15% mobility rate, and in Bear County, it's at 18%. We're unique because of that. We're unique because of our diversity. There are 28 different home languages spoken in our community. The top four of the last, uh, two years, English, Spanish, Portuguese, Chinese, Burmese also been there. We have multiple races and ethnicities. We have diverse economic levels. And as a community, we're also seeing some change. We're seeing an increasing number of English learners. And in our community, we're also seeing an increased number of military-connected families. In addition, our enrollment is stable, but participation in programs is rapidly growing. Our CTE programs eight years ago had 100 students. This year, we're over 800. So when we talk about what does equity mean, it's ensuring that we have programs that are ready to meet the needs and provide equitable access as we continue to garner support and participation in those programs. So that's a little bit about how Alamo Heights is unique by the number, but Alamo Heights is also unique by the character. The Equity Council is a new structure, but equity work is not new here in Alamo Heights. If it is about meeting the unique needs of students and families, we have been in this work for a long time. Back in 2008, we put in the lake bus so that any student that wants to stay after school to participate in tutorials or participate in athletics has a ride home. We opened up open enrollment courses so that any student who's willing to do the work and can maintain the grades, they can participate in advanced placement courses. We started our dual-language program. That's that picture at the bottom. If anything's a beautiful example of equity, it's that. Half of the students are learning English. Half of the students are learning Spanish, and it raises opportunities for all. Since then, some of the other additional work that's gone on, you may not know, but at the junior school, we have a program called Free Athletics. Some students have been participating in soccer since they were out at Alamo Heights. Sports in Houston Soccer, Alamo High Rider Soccer Team. And others have not had those opportunities. So this is a chance in junior school to learn the fundamentals of the teams that we have so that students have the opportunity to try out and participate in athletics. Grading procedures are another example of equity at work. And one that's near and dear to my heart is over at Cambridge, the WHOA Huddle, which is for military-connected families, helping families through transition and deployment. All of that just speaks to the character of Alamo Heights. We are a compassionate community. We are quick to respond. We are generous to intervene whenever we see a need. The Equity Council is grounded in belonging. In 2020, we went out and asked the community, what are the areas Alamo Heights needs to focus on? One of them was belonging. And so this is the goal that emerged last spring. In Alamo Heights, we are committed to a culture of belonging. A strong sense of belonging generates feelings of trust, connection, pride, and motivation. No one feels alone. Last summer, we all called for the formation of an Equity Council to establish- Last summer, we all called for the formation of an Equity Council to establish a framework to identify, measure, and eliminate bias, prejudice, unlawful discrimination, and to center our work on achievement, learning experiences, and inclusion. The first thing we did is, as in words matter, was come up with a definition. And so, we grounded our definition in the National School Board, and it speaks to equity in public school. And it says, "Public school should provide equitable access and ensure that all students have the knowledge and the skills to succeed as contributing members of a rapidly changing global society, regardless of factors such as race, gender, sexual orientation, ethnic background, English proficiency, immigration, socioeconomic status, disability, learning difference." And I would add to that, after my work this year, also equity is access and information to families that are new in Alamo Heights. As you heard from some of the people that spoke tonight, we did put out a call to anybody that wanted to join us in this work. We had 70 volunteers, active volunteers. 39 were parents or community members. 20 were junior school and high school students as youngs, 12 all the way up to seniors in high school, and 11 staff members. And we divided that work team into five groups. The first one, talking about equitable academic outcomes. This is test scores, its retention, its graduation rates. Access and inclusion, which is programs, athletics, fine arts. And then equitable treatment of people, which was taking a deep look at our discipline, taking a look at sense of belonging, positive relationships, and high expectations. One thing I want you to know is that we worked in five different teams, but there is an incredible crossover between the teams. For instance, we know that there is a correlation between sense of belonging, academic outcomes. Our students who have a stronger sense of belonging have stronger, higher PSAT scores. We see that in the general research, we see that in our own data. Additionally, we know that students who participate, and it doesn't matter what the participation is, play the two, but be the quarterback, just participate. Students who do have a stronger sense of belonging, have stronger positive relationships with adults, and have a stronger sense that they are held at high expectations. So, our entire work this year has been doing an equity assessment. We looked at 61 different data sources, numbers completing the degree to which. We see some gaps or some patterns. And then, we've also talked to a lot of people. We've tried to elevate the voices of our students, our staff, and our families through focus groups and through interviews. And then, we had synthesis meetings where each team came out and just gave a report. Work Team One, here's what we've learned. Work Team Two, here's what we've learned. In addition to that, we've also did a couple of concrete things this year. One was, we changed our student survey. Before, students gave feedback about, in general, here's what I think about high school, junior school, Woodbridge, or Cambridge. This year, students were able to give feedback to each one of their teachers. We did this in March. It was anonymous. We had 13,000 responses. I only had to delete one, and it wasn't because it was inappropriate or a heparin language. It was just kind of nonsense, "I like dogs." Woof, woof, woof. So, other than that, an anonymous survey and the feedback that our students gave our teachers in the middle of a pandemic was incredibly affirming. And you all know, students don't hold back their punches. If they thought something, an activity, a routine was boring, needed some work, they told that, they told our teachers that, but they did it in a respectful way. It just speaks to the caliber of our students. In addition to that, Dr. Arfao has been working with our assistant principals, revised the procedures for dealing with student discrimination and harassment. We have a new campus discipline management plan. It has three tiers of consequences, first infraction, second, and third. There's a new investigation report form to standardize how allegations are investigated, and revised our extracurricular code to include more explicit language about prohibitive harassment. We also had a staff development day where we did four modules with all of our staff. The first one was on the use of protocols for discussion. The more sensitive the topic, the more structured the discussion about the gift of listening and the importance of being fully present when you're talking with each other and when you're talking to students. We reflected on student comments when we asked, what do you wish the adults knew about inclusion, equity, and culture? And then, teaching through an equity lens, which hinges on the responsibility of the adults to remain impartial so that all students feel like they can participate in all lessons. These are just some pictures from that April 26 day. And you can see when we asked our students, "The professional, the professional learning was designed for our local Alamo Heights area?" Yes, it's green. This day was taught by our teachers for our teachers. We had the last meeting for our 2021 Equity Council on May 7th and 8th. And if you want to see Alamo Heights at their best, this was that moment. This is what we do so well, is come together as a group, and even if there are differences of opinion, but we all care about and put kids first. So, you can see in those pictures, we've got students talking with parents. We've got school board members, we've got superintendents, administrators, counselors. Alamo Heights School Foundation is there, and together putting our kids first. We came up with some proposed recommendations next month. I'll bring those to you, and we can look through those recommendations. I talked about that student feedback, and you know, you all know, I live life in open optimism, so I'm going to live here for a moment. This is in that anonymous survey that was given in March. Crazy year, separated by plexiglass, separated by dividers, Heights at Home, face-to-face. And we asked our students in March, overall, "What grade do you give this class?" Did I mention it's anonymous? And you can see what the question was. It was turning to tables where students had a slider, and they could change that grade from an A to a B to a C to a D for an F. And when we asked students in March, "What grade do you give this class right now?", 75% of our kids gave their class an A. And if you put B in there, we're at 95% of students rate their classes and their teachers top marks. And when I said that talks about the caliber of our students, this is a quote from one student. There were two of them in it. "What do you like about this class that we should keep doing? What's an area of improvement?" So, this young student said, "This teacher is so nice. Like, we don't deserve her. I'm like your worst student, and she's still nice to me." And then, the "What can we do to improve?" One-on-one talks because sometimes I don't listen to instructions, but I'm too afraid to ask. So, if I'm a teacher, that absolutely affirms the hard work and the heart that I give my class and gives me something to improve for next year. The question I get asked most frequently is, "So, what's this all about? What's this all about? What is this Equity Council? What's it all about?" We do have a stated goal, but I'm going to link into the beginning of our mission statement that says, "Alamo Heights, the heart of our community." And I have a picture there of those, those are seniors. Okay, who are with last week. Who last week went to go back with their Spanish, seven years later, went to have lunch at Easy's with their fifth-grade teachers because they still feel like they belong at Cambridge. They still feel like they belong to Spanish immersion. Below that, we have Catherine Barrett. She graduated from Heights years ago, and she came back because Alamo Heights School District is the heart of the community. There are so many families that choose, go away to college and choose to come back and raise their families here, not just because the exceptional quality of education, but because Alamo Heights is the heart of the community. It feels like home. And what this is all about is making sure that all students, whether they go on to college, career, culinary school, military, that they feel like there is non-square miles of a community that will always be ready for them, and they will always be welcome back. At the end of the day, that's what this work is about, making sure that we remain the heart of the community. That's it.
Jimmy, thank you. Thank you for all your work this year. I can say I was involved in that last two-day workshop, and one of the things that impressed me the most on it was our group, we were given specific data that had been derived from the community, what were the community's issues they wanted us to address, and that's what we were tethered to. And we stayed with that. And so, you took this process. Equity could be this giant, giant tent, and you drilled it down to what our community asked us to address, and you did a great job. So, the process itself was fantastic. I'd also like to specifically, I loved the part on the professional development day in which you focused on, and this as a lawyer is near and dear to my heart, protocols of discussion and how to be impartial moderators of a discussion. Because if there's one thing that we are lacking in today's society, it is the ability to discuss difficult issues in a civil manner. And if we can start training our students to do that, the ripple effect of that is they go forth into their college careers or in their working life or in the military, wherever they go, if we give them that skill, then we know we've made the world a better place. So, I really appreciate that focus. Any one have a question, David?
You've kept us in the loop the whole time, and I know you're coming back. I don't have particular questions right now. I want to tell you that I appreciate your transparency. I appreciate your adherence to what we asked you to do when there was so much political noise on either side that was trying to distract from what we asked you to do. And so, I appreciate you for staying the course. And I have to put into the record that our teachers, that idea of equity is ingrained in them. And I can remember Paul Forster spending more time with my brother on calculus than me because I got it quicker than he did. And that's just ingrained in being a teacher. So, I appreciate all the focus here. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone?
I've just got to say, I appreciate the time and the energy. I can't think of a better person to champion this for us. And for the time you spent with all the PTOs and the patience you've shown to all the questions. Thank you.
We're going to make you cry all night. Anyone?
I was just going to ask Dr. Walker, for those who are listening and been wondering, you know, you shared, you spent the year for the most part gathering all of this data and analyzing the data, right? And then, you know, a lot of people in the community are wanting to know, you know, when do all of these changes happen, right? And, you know, you explained in 2008, we did these various changes. I think all of this was great. It looks like Dr. Fisher is going to want to jump in on this.
I'll swoop in for you.
And I'm not, I'm asking in a way, I want specifics of this or that, but just for those that are, that have been listening to this, go along and have curiosity, maybe even have some concern about what equity is going to look like, you know, we can expect to see some of these changes, and are they going to have an opportunity over the course of the coming months and years to watch as these things, you know, and have a chance to have their voices, you know, heard on any of that?
So, the quick response is that instead of just watching this evolve, we're hoping that we have even greater community participation and partnering with the important work that will take place over the course of the next few years. So, with any strategic planning process, we come to you all as the trustees and kind of put the massaged action items before you all so that you can help us think through which of those are high-leverage and need to be taken on first, which of those you have questions about, if there are any that there are concerns about. So, our initial plan is to bring that to you in the June meeting and to just have those preliminary conversations about, this work's not going to take place in the course of a couple of months. This is going to take us like last time when we focused on equity and access instead of equity and belonging. It's going to take us years to chip away at. And so, again, we've had folks since the implementation of the council say, "I would like to be a part of this." And so, we'll do another community call for some work teams to help us, again, just partner in the important work that will result from, from the look at the data and the synthesis meetings. So, look forward to that. But June will be the first time that we come to you just with the action items identified.
Great. Thank you very much.
Jimmy, I'm so proud of you. Just have to say that.
With that, we are going to move on to the next item on our agenda, the Consent Agenda. These are items that are considered routine by the board or have been previously reviewed and discussed in prior meetings and that we therefore enact in one motion. Having had an opportunity to review the consent agenda items, is there anything that any of the board members would like to remove from the consent agenda, consider as an item in the regular agenda? One thing that I would like to mention, and every month this comes up, and it's just a reminder of how special this community is. This past month, we got over $75,000 in donations. And so, in addition to paying property taxes to support us, folks are giving out of their pocket even more, and we are very, very grateful. If there are no items to pull out, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, we lost half our team.
I know. We still have four, unfortunately. A second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carries. We'll now move on to section seven of our agenda, which are the committee reports. We have three committee reports. The first one, item A, is the Alamo Heights School Foundation, which met on May 12, 2021. I know Lisa Cringer is not here tonight, but we auto acknowledge she's in Austin for the graduation of her son from the University of Texas. A worthwhile reason to meet. Dr. Shar, take over.
Yeah, so what's exciting is that this was the first face-to-face meeting of the foundation. We actually met over at the Botanical Gardens, and we had lunch together and had our first face-to-face meeting of the year, and so, it was exciting. What was even more exciting than that is that they announced their gift to the school will be $1,000, $1,100. Thank you for the clarification. So, even more than what they had budgeted in the past. And so, of course, there was some real concern and, you know, about what the possibility could be about fundraising this year, and they exceeded their goal. And so, we are so grateful for them and for their work. They talked about exciting plans about Greater Heights Night next year, and they did talk about the challenge that they'll face because the costs of holding those kind of events are about 40% up at this point. And so, they didn't change the budget, they didn't change their goal, but they're really trying to get some great excitement around that. So, they spent a lot of time talking about Greater Heights Night. They also identified new board members that we'll be rotating on, and we're excited to present those. So, just again, words of gratitude for the incredible efforts, the creative efforts to raise money in a remote platform for this year's Greater Heights Night. It was a great meeting.
Thank you. And for item B is our building committee, which met on May 12, 2021. And for some reason, we have Bonnie Giddens now to present, but Ms. Giddens has left the building.
We were all, well, the old members were all present for that specifically. I don't know if we do a report on that anyway, right? But if...
Generally, we give a report for the public.
So, at that meeting, we reviewed the variance report from the bond, and Mike just presented where we are budget-wise on track and also talked about the timeline for the completion of the athletic complex. We did have some preliminary conversations as well about the possibility of a new scoreboard at the, at the new athletic complex. So, we had a lot that morning, many different committee meetings, but I think those are the two items that we discussed there.
Can I add one quick thing? Because we did have a graduation today at the Naddatorium. And so, like the new buildings, the design, like how they really inspired people to be there, like our staff figured out this wonderful way to have a graduation proceeding for the Excel Academy outdoors. And as trustees and as administrators and as architects, and we're all building all that, we were just trying to build a welcoming environment. And then, the staff realized this is perfect for graduation. And so, just the attention to detail with all the stuff that's going through has been really, really helpful.
And worth mentioning on the Naddatorium, when we were over there for this graduation, we stuck our head in and saw for the first time, and all of the swim lanes were filled with swimmers swimming labs. And so, members of our community are out using these facilities, which is really nice. The other thing I would just say, because I've heard it a few times, and let's be very, very clear, the athletics complex will be done by August 1st. There are no delays. We will be in the new football stadium for the football season.
Don't jinx it.
Oh, no. We're putting it down, right, Mike?
Mike's starting to sweat.
Mike's nodding yes. Our next item is the Equity Council Committee, which met on May 7th and 8th. I think everyone's probably heard enough about it, so you don't want to hear me drum about it. Section eight of our agenda is business recommendations. There are no business recommendations tonight. So we'll move right on to section nine, which is the calendar review.
Okay, so we have quite a few calendar items on our agenda for May and for June. Excited about hosting senior awards tomorrow night, hopefully good weather. Those will be hosted on the junior school field. We, okay, this is new. This was just added today. So we don't have this on our calendar yet. But we are needing to call an additional building committee meeting for all of us to attend, not just the committee members, next Wednesday morning at 7:00 a.m. There's, I know I've been pushing the limits with some long meetings these last couple of, there's no reason why we will not finish by 9:00 o'clock. Okay? I'm going to promise it. I'm sorry, next Wednesday, yes. Eighth grade graduation, the junior school will be outside again on the field next Wednesday, May 26th. Excited about hosting graduation on Thursday, May 27th at Real Life Amphitheater. Our new trustees will go through half-day orientation Wednesday, June 2nd and Thursday, June 3rd. We are ending, is it Thursday, with a tour of the facilities over at the athletic complex. And so I would invite any trustee that wants to join us at 3:30 to come by central office and we'll go from there. Get to your hard hats. 3:30, June 3rd.
I know we're off.
Don't throw me out.
Glad you're welcome to your new lounge.
June 8th, we'll host a lunch and learn for our new trustees as well. G and P meeting in June is the 9th. Ryan, you've got city council meeting on June 14th, 5:30 p.m. Regular board meeting will be June 16th. And just a note again, that's typically on Thursday nights. This is a change. It's the Wednesday, June 16th. We'll have an additional lunch and learn on the 22nd and budget committee meeting. This is another, this is an added meeting that you possibly don't have on your calendar, but we need time to just concentrate on budget for next year. And that will be Wednesday, June 23rd. Any questions about any of the calendar items?
And for the budget committee, is this is the entire board? As opposed to just the smaller?
Thank you for passing the clarification. It's all of us.
You got that, Plugg?
June 23rd.
And then 22nd, we have some trainings that days. Do we attend 22nd training as well?
The lunch and learn?
June 22nd, yes.
All right. And we're ready to move to item 10 on our agenda, the superintendent's communication.
53, 53.
Oh, it changed, didn't it?
Yeah.
53, 53. Thanks, Emma. There we go. So I just have a few things for us to review here tonight for the May superintendent's update. And I want to remind us that we're coming to the end of the legislative session that will be finalized on May 31st. I just put up our legislative priorities that we identified at the beginning of the session that we visited with our representatives about. And I want to just put one bill on your radar. We've talked before about the House Bill 3 cleanup bill. It is now, it will be heard in the Senate soon. It's on the docket for hearing. And it's called House Bill 1525 at this point. We've got some real concerns that we're working with Bear County Education Coalition and also the Texas School Coalition to navigate through because there's a new requirement in section 25 that would require school districts to reserve part of the ESER funds, the federal funds, through a fifth year of implementation. And TEA would determine the percentage that we would be required to hold off in our fund balance until 2024, 2025. And so that just really undoes the authority of your local board to make the decisions about how to use those federal funds. And again, this is just another point of frustration that Texas is the only state that is moving forward with these kind of restrictions around how we can spend those federal dollars. School districts across the state have very real needs in meeting learning loss and in addressing budget concerns based on what we've, you know, allocated for COVID and for opening of schools. And they need to be able to make decisions locally to use those funds. So just know that we continue to advocate. At this point, it's important to reach out to our senators to make sure that they understand where we are on that. And we've done that from the school district side, but it would be helpful for you all to do that as well.
Dana, can I add really quick? It'd be helpful to reach out to our business leaders too.
Sure.
Because a lot of them put pressure on the governor to release those funds to us, which happened. And then these strings were attached later. And I want to make sure our business leaders who lobby it on our behalf are aware.
So and I also think it's important to put on the table, you remember there was real tension about our fund balance? And there was some discussion early on with us that they were going to limit what we could have in our fund balance. This essentially requires us to put more money in our fund balance, right? Like so, it's just, it just doesn't feel good. So again, that's House Bill 1525. And we should see some action around that soon. So the big question is about what are our plans for school for 2021, 2022? And I will say, you know, we put out a statement today, we continue to be encouraged about what we're seeing across the nation, across the state, in our own local community especially, around positive trends in the world of COVID and the spread of COVID. We, as a district, continue to progress monitor. Every week, we continue to look at active cases. We look at our ZIPCo data. We continue to be in a great place in 78209, 78212, 78216. As far as active case spread, we're seeing that continue to decline. We're also looking at, which is interesting, they're posting on the Metro Health site, the vaccination reports. And we were able to track that by ZIPCo too. And so 78209, 78212, and 78216 continue to have the best vaccination numbers in the area. And so that too, just brings us a lot of comfort as we look forward and think about what this is going to look like for next year. We're also celebrating that almost 90% of our staff is fully vaccinated at this point. And we also know that the availability of vaccinations for students ages 12 and older is encouraging at this point. And so it just feels really good right now as we look forward to thinking about how to get back to a normal experience, a normal school year for next year.
It's been a while since you've sat down.
Right.
That's a really good statement to hear.
Thank you. On Tuesday, we all know that the governor issued an executive order that prohibits governmental entities for requiring masks. After June 4th, we issued the statement today saying that we were actually going to start that with the start of our summer school on June 1st. So masks will be optional for all of our students, staff, and visitors to campus. Those who continue to want to wear masks, we will be fully supportive of that, of course. So we meet next week with our COVID Advisory Council just to continue to push on the return to normal. You know, the elimination of the Plexiglas barriers, the need, you know, moving away from the need for social distancing. We want visitors to be back on campus. We want field trips to take place next year. And because of what I shared originally, we feel really good about that. So we'll continue to work our process and to visit with our staff and our students and our community members that serve on that committee. I feel like I'll have some more specifics to present to you all in June when we come back. But again, I just, I'm excited to be at this place. And I'm also proud of the way that we walked through decisions that needed to be made this year to open schools and to keep our schools open. And so the next slide, I'm just going to go into some celebrations. Wow, we had a great time of celebration at the beginning of this meeting that just kind of showcases student achievement. I am celebrating student experiences. Today, our junior school hosted our very first mule games where all of our students in our SST classrooms from the junior school and high school competed in kind of a field day experience. And they were aided by their peer tutors in the program. And it was so exciting. It was emotional. It was full of so much joy. And so just the experiences that our schools continue to provide in a crazy kind of existence is just a real celebration. We hosted senior send-offs this year, this week. You saw Jimmy share a picture. Oh, and there's a picture up there. You can see Danny Port is in the middle of all the seniors who came back to Woodridge to celebrate their graduation but to reconnect with their elementary teachers. You can see that, well, we also hosted our talent show at the high school. I'm celebrating community performances. We had an incredible combined orchestra performance that really showcased the talents of our students. We had a successful pitch night for Heights Business Incubator. We just continue to walk through the year in a way that showcases the talent of our students and the great things that are taking place in our schools. And then I'm also celebrating our staff. You can see in the center of that picture, we have Coach Mack, Michael McElraff, who teaches at the junior school and is also a football coach at our high school. He was recognized last week as the Texas History Teacher of the Year through the Texas Pioneers. And that's just, he's an incredible, anybody who's had interaction with him just know what a great relationship builder he is. And there's no one more deserving than that kind of recognition. We're also recognizing our staff members who are making decisions about retirement. We hosted a district-wide celebration of excellence a few weeks ago at this point in our Oaks. It was one of the first times that we were all together as a staff community to recognize those award winners that come before you as a board, but also, again, those retiring. And so again, just great celebrations around student experience, community performances and stuff. And so I feel like I would be remiss in not just sharing some reflections on this year as we're closing out the school year in May. I feel truly that we are experiencing a new level of pride in who we are, who we have become. To me, there's this new collective identity that's characterized by perseverance and innovation and grace and determination and resiliency. And also just prioritizing care for one another as a community. There is so much for each one of us to be proud of. I start off with being just so proud of our students for how they've walked through the year. They've shown up every day. We opened like no other school district in our area with so many of our students wanting to be back face-to-face. And they didn't let the Plexiglas. And they didn't let the arrows on the ground. And they didn't let the masks inhibit their excitement for returning to our schools. And I'm just incredibly proud of what you see, you know, here tonight, what they've accomplished. We have to recognize how proud we are of our staff in May as we look back over the year. Our bus drivers, y'all, like have reconfigured the way that they facilitate their, the structure of the bus. They sanitize coming in, they space kids out, they disinfect after every route. And they're delivering meals to our community members from the start of the shutdown. Our custodians have worked around the clock. They've thought through different ways to sanitize and to clean. When there was a real time of fear in what we were facing, they stepped up to take care of our kids and to take care of our staff members, our office staff, our secretaries. Stepped outside their box. They covered classrooms from time to time. They implemented new ways of recording attendance and supporting our students and families through reporting attendance while they had to be on quarantine. Our nurses are nothing short of superheroes this year as they've kind of shepherded all of us through that culture of care that we celebrate, that really helped us keep our schools open. They had tough conversations with families from time to time where they had to share news about quarantine and nobody wanted to hear that. They kept incredible records. They kept us positive. And they kept us strong throughout. Okay, so I've got teachers. I don't know if I'm going to make it through this. So Ryan, you're going to just tag team. You're going to throw it, but teachers have been asked to be so much more than they've ever been asked before. They gave up planning time, y'all. They were not compensated anything additionally for their extra efforts. They were very fearful, not all of them, but there was real anxiety and there was real fear at the beginning of the year. And they chose a heart for our kids over any of that. And so we have to express our pride in who, or who our teachers showed that they are. Our principals, our administrators have walked through some really difficult challenges this year to kind of navigate what in the world their schools were going to look like. And we joked about it at the beginning of the year where we said they attended to a million different things, right? To open our schools. And they were responsive through what we learned throughout the year to change some of our procedures and to improve our procedures. They pushed to have incredible experiences. Again, they had tough conversations with parents. They, at times, had difficult conversations with staff. I'm so proud of our administrative team. My personal team, Frank Stanich, Frank Alfarro, Jimmy Walker, Jamie Lachlan, Mike Hager, Melissa Benavides, spent time with me multiple Sundays together, multiple early mornings together, evening meetings together, group texts together. They were asked to step outside their common role. They always wear multiple hats, but they wore so many different hats. And they did that with pride for this community and for this district. And I will forever be grateful for your partnership and for answering my texts and for showing up at the meetings that I called. You all are an incredible team. And then you all, as trustees, our team of eight that walked through this all together, need to hear my words of gratitude, first and foremost, for the way that you anchored every decision. And there were many tough decisions that you all had to make. And I have to shout out to Bonnie and Perry as well as I comment through this, because nothing we did, no decisions we made were actually easy. But you anchored your decisions always into what was best for kids. And that kept us steady, that kept us on track. And that leads to the celebration that we're having about this year. So I came to you throughout the year asking for different layers of support. I asked them for added staff at the beginning of the year. I came and said, I need more nurses, I need more custodians, I need permanent substitutes. We were in a budget situation and you all said yes, which whatever you need, Dana, you move forward. I asked you for flexible leave policies to support our staff members who are going to have to face time away from our campuses because of quarantine or because they had contacted COVID. And you said yes, be flexible about that. I came to you mid-year and asked for appreciation bonus stipends to just share a small token with every one of our employees, from our custodians, bus drivers, hair professionals, teachers, administrative staff. And you said yes. I asked for calendar adjustments throughout the year to support them with much-needed planning time. And you said yes. And for that, I'm incredibly grateful and I'm also incredibly proud. So I have this quote that has kind of anchored me this year. And I'm going to read it to you. It says, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in the midst of comfort and convenience, but it's where he stands in times of challenge." That's a quote from Martin Luther King. And I think it's important to share that the uncertainty and the challenge of this year has provided us with a very unique, I feel like a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to measure the talent of our team, to measure the commitment and dedication, and to measure the heart of our students for this district. So it's been 25 years for me. And I don't know that I have been more proud of who we are and more proud to serve this amazing district when we have been provided this year an opportunity to highlight what I say is the measure of strength in our school community. So those are my reflections. I'm going to end there. What a year. Look at the pictures up there, from remote learning to SNOWvid to cheerleaders on the field with their masks on, to us distributing, you know, food in the community, to us packing up boxes to provide supplies and devices to our students at the start of the year when we started with remote learning. I'm incredibly proud and I'm grateful to serve this district.
This is your communication, but with what you've just said, we would be remiss if we didn't recognize your role in this. And as your shout-outs went to the whole team and to the trustees, I'm reminded of a quote and I'll butcher it, but it was during the NCAA championship game about the Baylor basketball team. And Coach, the commentator said, basically, great things happen when everyone knows their role and performs it or executes the plan perfectly. And I do think that describes this district. But I think it also, we have to acknowledge that.
But I think it also, we have to acknowledge that a ship in the middle of a storm is only as good as the captain who's at the wheel. And you deserve an incredible amount of just profound appreciation for what you did. You didn't have a playbook for this. I'm sure nowhere in graduate school.
No.
Then they say, "When the pandemic hits, go to page 67." So you were making it up on the fly, you had a great team with you. That helped. I think we have to also recognize in my few days transitioning into this role as president, I'm already seeing, it's a different role from just being a trustee. And David, you thanked us, but I think we also have to thank you because in the middle of this year, and it's just difficult a year, you didn't have a playbook either, but the two of you worked together to provide leadership to this district. And you put together a team, you assigned roles, the roles were performed and executed perfectly or as close to perfect as we could get. And I think only as a result of that have we had this incredible outcome. And no one would have guessed, I mean, you can open a paper today and read a story about somewhere in the nation, a debate, do we open our schools? Do we bring kids back? And I think people need to stop and think for a moment and realize, we brought our kids back in August. And when we voted on that, I think everyone would be lying if they said they were 100% confident in their vote. But we did it and we pulled it off and we're getting to the end. Talking to Ron Riddeman a couple of weeks ago and he said, "I don't want to jinx it, but we've got two more games to go." Now, he wasn't counting on our baseball team making the run in the playoffs, it is. He said, "We got two games to go and we will have made it to where we didn't cancel a single athletic event because of our team having COVID." I mean, that's incredible. And we got through the school year, we've done well by our kids, we've got plans to help them. I love the fact that we have counselors in place. I mean, I think that, you know, an organization is measured by how it does in the most difficult of times and we have done well. I think it's a moment to pat ourselves on the back, but I think also you need to take a moment when you can catch your breath. And it was good to hear you say something positive because I can sense your mind is shifting to better things. So thank you very much on behalf of the entire district.
Okay, with that, we, before we move into our next two items on the agenda, if there are no objections, we're going to take a short break before we enter into executive session as per Texas Government Code, section 551.001. And thank you, everyone who came and stayed as long as you did.
We should have.